What people were asking for, another that it was so exclusive of the arts organizations at its tariff level. And it has made us understand that what community is asking for is empowering residents to be part of the revitalization of downtown, that we want residents that have expressed a heartfelt desire for a vibrant and livable and community, that we wanted loud arts experiences, and by loud, it's not decibel level, it really is about accessibility to a diversity of programming. It is about being able to engage in a 21st century way. It's engaging through a variety of both interactive experiences as well as passive experiences, as well as experiences over social media. There were visioning walls that were placed throughout the community to ask people to respond to ideas about the arts. There were focus groups, there were meetings in various different places throughout the community, and attempt was made to really engage multiple audiences. It was not to engage the arts organizations, you will hope they were included, it was not to engage one particular region of downtown, it was really to look at the city as a whole. Although it was focused on really creating a plan for downtown because this was funded through the NPP, I think a deliberate attempt was made to broaden it out to the entire city, realizing that in the future, this is going to have to be a plan for the entire city. We had community engagement through public surveys, community sessions, full day planning retreat in August, and 1,000-plus hours of community time devoted to ensuring that this happened. There were over 1,000 individual conversations and contributions, and the idea was to create an arts and culture plan that would last for a number of years, but always be benchmarked in its performance, so that we can come back and revise and have the people to help do that. By the way, this is mildly spontaneous and unrehearsed, so if you like to interrupt me, it won't derail me, or at least hopefully it won't derail me. The plan is called 2021. It's about leveraging our resources, it's leveraging our leadership and leveraging our location. And the location is within downtown Allentown, it's within Allentown, it's within the Lehigh Valley. Our leadership is to bring together in a collaborative way, the leadership of our civic structures, our foundations, and philanthropy structures, our corporate structures, and our educational institutions, to create an environment where we are all working together. And what we are looking for is a vibrant, energetic, and engaging downtown and city with an abundance of diverse community arts and cultural offerings. And the guiding principles is that we will celebrate diversity in our community, we will embrace our neighbors, we will do programming that is neighborhood-based as well as citywide-based, we will inspire collaboration, we will plan for sustainable arts organizations. Because one of the things that has been imperative for us to look at is that very few of our arts institutions are as sustainable today as they were 20 years ago. And part of that has a lot to do with loss of funding on a federal level, loss of funding on a state level, loss of funding on a city level, and the fact that a majority of the patrons for the arts between 2008 and 2010 passed away in Allentown. The major patrons that caused the creation of those organizations have all passed away. And so, we, at the museum, we lost $500,000 between 2008 and 2010 in terms of annual contributions. We are not unique in that. Certainly, what's going on in federal government right now has the potential of taking away another hundred through $200,000 annually from us if some of what is being discussed actually comes to fruition. So, but we support sustainable organizations, we're leading collectively. The idea is that when you, if you're going to float a boat, you've got to float everybody's boat. That the key to the future is collaboration, the key to the future is working together, the key to the future is developing new audiences, and the key is to understand our audiences and engage them in ever more and more creative ways. And so, there are two signature initiatives that are coming out of this plan. One is the Neighborhood Artist and Residence Program, and the second is the Innovation Challenge Grant. There is approximately $55,000 which has been allocated to the Neighborhood Artist and Residence Program. Those are artists who will be deeply embedded within the neighborhoods, who have to work with neighborhood associations, who have to live in those neighborhoods, and who have to work on behalf of those neighborhoods. The Innovation Challenge Grants for artists and artistic institutions is something that, in order to make our institutions more contemporary, in order to have a greater impact in the community, in order to develop new audiences, we're creating a fund to actually propose collaborative projects that will enable them to grow in new ways and generate new audiences, and to figure out a way to become sustainable. The first part of that is funded already for three artist residencies taking place. The first artist residency went to the Allentown Public Theater Group, that is doing six months of programming in the Jordan Heights neighborhood. There are poetry readings, plays, acting classes, et cetera, and those are all benchmarked in terms of impact, and something that we will look at as we develop second and third residency programs. We're looking at things that will build bridges across communities. The artists can't exist just for the sake of art, they have to have an impact on community development, they have to have an impact on creating safe neighborhoods, they have to have an impact on educational excellence. And so, when we award those projects, those are the kind of ideas that we are looking for the artists to respond to and work with. They will have a team of people from throughout the neighborhoods to work with, and they will be cohorting their efforts with some of the arts organizations in the, throughout the community. They each receive a yearly stipend, the stipend is approximately $10,000, and then there are grants that are for the cost of the project itself. The Innovation Challenge Grant is just coming into its own right now, it's encouraging changes to be relevant and sustainable, incentivizing the acceleration of innovation, and really redefining what we mean in the arts by innovation. It is, I think, a desire to increase the awareness of the arts and cultural offerings here, increase awareness of the excellence of the arts that already exists in the community, increase our energies with the ASD and the charter schools throughout this area. Certainly, the museum has just submitted a bunch of grants for the Urban Arts Partnership, which is a partnership between the Allentown Arts, the Allentown School District and the museum, that involves high school students. There are additional partnerships where, as an example, every fourth grader comes to the museum three times a year. We offer a teach-training program, and we're looking to do some of those programs cross-disciplinary throughout the community. We're looking to strengthen city government's support for arts and culture, and I think this year's effort that you led was really phenomenal, and addressed some of those issues up front. And we're interested in seeing if these programs can incentivize greater philanthropy, and we can leverage your funds with public and private funding throughout the city. I'm talking fast, so...
That's good.
Let me know, I thought it was. So, just because some of the success measures are, we're planning on using data to measure impact and results of a plan on a yearly basis, compare future data to initial baseline, and the metrics of arts and cultural activity, which includes greater participation, reduce barriers to participation, increase number of individuals employed in arts, positive economic impact, et cetera. I think in the final analysis, what you've done enables us to broaden the scope and reach of the arts within our community. Certainly, Allentown School District by hiring 11 new art teachers and by hiring a new curriculum person in the arts has done virtually the same thing. And so, we are off on a very positive perception and impact on the city, and I thank you for that. I, if you answer any questions, I just want to let you know that on your desk is the Third Thursday brochure giving you the information for the next three months. You also have a brochure for the museum on programming through till the beginning of the summer. And also, with compliments of the museum trustees and the arts community, the museum commissioned seven artists to document Allentown from their own aesthetic perspectives, and the catalog for that exhibition, reproducing all the artists' work on Allentown is before you with our compliments. So, do you have any questions on this?
Outstanding presentation, I think you've done it once or twice before, but it's fantastic, we appreciate that. And it's always good to hear that you're helping the Allentown School District with children. You say the fourth graders come three times a year?
Fourth graders come three times a year in a program that's actually been in existence for 20 years, called Discover Art.
Wow, I realize that.
Right.
Do you still have the high school art exhibit for the, all the high school kids?
Yeah, we don't have the Scholastic exhibit anymore, but actually, the high schools just finished their exhibition at the museum, actually, high school and middle school finished the exhibition this week.
And obviously, it's a great partnership between our museum, the school district, and the city government, and we look for that partnership to continue.
Thanks.
Any questions from my colleagues? Mr. Greedy, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mickenberger, wonderful presentation.
Thanks.
A lot of work, and I'm happy that we were able to support you this year. Back in the budget.
It's been an honor, thank you.
Well done. And I often talk to my friend Rico Peralta, who always tells me, you know, you've got to make the arts part of the city's talk every time, you know, every time we do a project, and we've got to make it part of our culture in this, in our city. And I, you know, you and I have high conversations.
We did, and you know, one of the things you started to do this year was great. Until we were back in, until the arts were back in city government, we were no longer applicable for funding from the Bloomberg Foundation or from art space, because the benchmark for them is the involvement in the city, direct funding from the arts. So, there was actually a $2 million offering, or proposal, or RFP from Bloomberg two years ago, that we couldn't apply for because we weren't back in city government. So, we're getting to the point where we can attract the attention of other organizations outside of the city and nationally, to leverage the dollars that you're giving to increase that support. Certainly, the work that City Center is doing downtown is an immense help for that as well. They're doing some phenomenal work with the arts.
And I, you know, they are, and I talked to JB about that myself, and they're doing a great job, and they're going to continue to do more. Just a quick comment here in regards to the Neighborhood Artist and Residence Program. And you mentioned the Jordan Heights area and some of the artists and residency programs that you're going to be looking to there. And then, I'm with the Council of Arupi organization, I'm actually president of the board, I don't know if you've been there.
I haven't, we've done summer programming with that organization.
Yeah, and I tell you, I really would like to see the Artist and Residency Program tied to that area, it's the poorest area we have in the city, and what happens sometimes is that it gets overlooked, because people usually concentrate north, west of the Jordan Creek, in the Jordan Heights area, and then they concentrate east of Front Street, down to the riverfront and Bucky Boy area. And that whole neighborhood in the first and sixth wards of the city, which is the poorest neighborhood probably in the whole region, I think we need to target and work hard with, and I know that you have a mind.
Yeah, we do.
We really, you know, we've done a great job developing the old warehouse that used to be owned by the Allentown Housing Authority, and now is the House of Council of Arupi, providing numerous innovative services over there, and that community deserves and deserves the attention that we can provide.
I absolutely agree with you. Don't mistake the fact that we just started with this first one, there are two other funded residency programs that are being looked at in the areas as well. One of the issues for us is we need to find artists who live in those areas and work with them and get them to develop a program, and that's coming.
Yeah, so I'd love to have you come up one of these days and meet with Lucy de la Barra there and some of the programs that we're providing at Council of Arupi, I think that would be the center for that community.
I would love to do that. Yesenia Perez, on the staff of the museum, who's one of our educators, has been working with Tresca Arupi in order to do summer programming there and residencies within the organization. I would love to go with you, it would be a pleasure.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's great.
Ms. Mora?
I just want to say thank you publicly for what you did. I called you and asked if you could take 100 kids and bring them to the museum, and you did that great tour with Rico Peralta, and those kids have never, ever been in a museum before, and you spent a couple of hours, you and Rico Peralta, and it just, you know, it was a really power for those kids. I just want to thank you publicly.
It was a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir, have a great evening, appreciate it.
Take care.
Move on to reports, reports from committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Guridi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met last week, and we discussed the budget for, the budget report for the month of, end of December, we call it Thursday December, for February, and we have no order scheduled meeting at this point, however, we do have a bill on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Community and Economic Development, Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and a future meeting has not yet been scheduled.
Thank you, sir. Human Resources Administration, appointments, Ms. Appa.
Committee met this evening, a future meeting has not yet been scheduled.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Mora.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting is not yet scheduled.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Hendrix.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met earlier this evening at 6:30. There is a bill on the agenda for tonight to be voted on, that's Bill 14, and there was one grant given to the fire department.
Thank you, sir. Public Work, Mr. McLean.
President, thank you. We met earlier this evening, I predict what time ours was, we'll roll together, but we have one bill, number 10, which was sent to the full council favorably.
Thank you, sir. Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations Strategy, that's my committee. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting has not yet been scheduled. We have an Ad-Hoc Committee on Inclusionary Zoning, co-chairs Mr. Guridi and Dr. McGuire, so only one of you can speak to that, please.
I just want to remind Dr. McGuire, we have met several times, two times individually, I have met with some people, some stakeholders in the community that are very interested in this issue. And we met last week regarding the second meeting. We are moving forward, the administration, more specifically, Mr. Lander, are looking at doing a white paper for this committee, and looking at any plans on how we can target either inclusionary zoning in the city, to see if there's a way to make something work, if it's feasible, and bring something up to Council, either, you know, say yay on a, in regards to inclusionary zoning, and if we can work something else. And also, looking at bettering the housing stack of the city, specifically for law and mother-in-law individuals.
Thank you, sir. And I remember Mr. Lander saying he was going to get some data together and obviously a white paper, and he would say he needed a couple of weeks to do that, so after that, we get that white paper, let's schedule a meeting as, you know, as soon as possible to keep this committee moving forward. We need to do that.
Yes, and we don't have a meeting, as soon as we did, the okay from Mr. Lander.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Glazier, City Control's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one for you this evening. This is the Council's payable weekly check review for, pretty much for the month of March. My department reviewed 443 checks for a total of $2.5 million, 14 wires for a total of $2.1 million. Couple of findings. Some bills are paid by wire, they're not paid by check, they're paid electronically. And there were some that we processed in March that were late, one was from August, one was from September 2016, and one was from 2017. The two from 2016, I had something to do with, they were payments for a medical insurance, and the documentation was really non-existent, and I refused to sign off on them at the time. They have been signed off on now as purely as a bookkeeping measure, so we could close the year. I can report that I had a meeting, a productive meeting, with Mr. Hartzell and Mr. Marketo, and we discussed the way wires should be processed, and hopefully, we'll, we won't have any more problems in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done. Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Wow. March were only so easy. There were a couple of overpaid tuition reimbursements that we found in fire administration, they were notified, the checks were voided, and the fire administration will look at these reimbursements a little bit more closely in the future, so we don't have that problem again. We had some untimely payment of invoices in March that came from, we'd like to pay things within 30 days, maybe 40 days, these were older than that, and a lot of those late payments are due because the budget got settled late, so, you know, the account 46 had to be adjusted, so blanket purchase orders were late in coming, and I don't expect any of that to be repeated. Beyond that, one or two late fees were paid, and we missed a couple of discounts. Hopefully, in two weeks, I'll have some additional reports for council and for the public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Glazier. Appointments, Ms. Appa, we have four appointments this evening, so let's go with the first one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Should I do them all?
No, let's do them individually.
Individually, all right. We have the Planning Commission, Damian C. Brown. Do we have any comments from my colleagues, any comments from the public?
Let's vote on Damian Brown then, let's pull it up.
Call him, Brown?
Uh huh, that's what we're doing.
Yep. Yeah, oh, there he is. All right, and, together?
Hold on a minute.
Why didn't we try it again? Mr. Agon?
I'm a yes.
And Mr. Agon, he knows he's ready back to seven days and noon days. Moving on, we have...
Damian here? Is Damian here? He wants to say a few words. No, Damian is not here, go ahead.
We have, so the Planning Commission, we have a sparse Scott Under zoning board. Do I have any comments from my colleagues? Anything from the public? Mr. Hamlin, can we take a vote?
I'm a yes.
Agon, you guess?
He left here. Damian Scott Oden was earlier, and he left at this point, so.
Moving on?
Let's go to our, let's go to our...
Jason Labach? Yes, a sheet metal technician board, Jason Labach. Do I have any comments from my colleagues, or from the audience? Seeing none? Mr. Hamlin, can you call for a vote, please?
Wire say yes, she raised in, and we're seven days and noon days.
And Jason Labach, is he here by chance? He is not. Go ahead, Ms. Appa, one more.
David Dewalt, plumbers examining board. Any comments from my colleagues? None from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Hamlin?
Mr. McGuire?
Yes?
We have seven days and noon days.
Is David here by chance? He is not. Thank you, Ms. Appa, great job, we're moving on. Odin is for final passage, Bill 10.
Bill 10 is an amendment to the traffic control.
Okay, Mr. McLean, that was in your committee earlier this evening.
Yes, it was, and it was recommended unanimously favorably to the full council.
Hey, any comments from my council members? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will vote on Bill 10.
Can we just do that wire amendment by common consent, under West Street?
Yeah, under West Street, sorry. Uh huh.
Okay, on the vote, we're calling you guys. Mr. McGuire? Yes? Seven days and noon days.
Thank you, sir. Bill 12.
Bill 12, Bill 12, amends the general fund by deleting the position of minister and assistant and adding the position of litigation paralegal, adding a E and.
Okay, this was in Ms. Appa's committee, we tapered it because our solicitor was not here, though at this time, I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Appa, and then obviously, the whole council will vote on it, so. Ms. Appa, you can turn it over to Mr. Hartzell, give him a little explanation, or Miss Wild can explain it also.
I will defer to the city solicitor, since she can explain very well the intention of this change in personnel in her office.
This is a new position in the office of the city solicitor, it's for a litigation paralegal. The goal, after, I've now been here almost two and a half years, and have really tried this year, now that I feel as though I have a good grasp of the position, to incorporate some efficiencies and restructuring in the office, to make things move more smoothly, but also to address the increased volume of litigation, in particular, involving the city of Allentown, and not just against the city of Allentown, but in some cases, matters that the city of Allentown needs to take an affirmative litigation step towards. The position would assist me in being able to keep much of the litigation work within the city solicitor's office, rather than sending it out to outside council, which, if you recall from my very, when I was first appointed, I stated as one of my goals, given that my background is in litigation, that I would cut back on the expenses of litigation by keeping as much of it in-house as possible. I believe that by adding this paralegal position, we will be able to do that even more, thereby reducing outside legal expense to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Wild. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Oh, Mr. Hendrix, comments from the public?
Just a quick comment, the difference in the salary expense?
You mean the adjustment that's being made?
Yes.
That's going to be made as from the unappropriated balance of the general fund due to vacancies that currently exist.
Okay, how much is the amount?
The differential, well, this position doesn't currently exist.
Okay.
We'll go to Mr. Hartzell.
But, but just to explain, so, in my budget, I only had a certain amount of money, which was not enough to hire this position, so there is a differential that is being made up out of unappropriated balance of the general fund.
And to be more specific, this, the position that is being created is actually half a position, because it was one shared between the city solicitor and mayor's office, now being replaced with a full-time position in that office to deal with paralegal needs and litigation.
All right, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Mr. Hamlin will vote on it.
Mr. McGuire? Oh, you're in. Fire Department, seven days and noon days.
Bill 13.
You know what I did, I passed over Bill 11.
Pass through Bill 11.
Bill 11 is an amendment to the general fund budget, that's the only grant for the fire department for fire thermal imaging.
And Mr. Hendrix, that was in your committee?
Yes, Mr. President. That's to purchase two new thermal imaging units, so that all the trucks do have them in it now, and that was passed to the full body, three to nothing, unanimous for approval.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hamlin will vote on Bill 11.
President, seven days and noon days.
Look, Daniel, go to Bill 13.
Bill 13 is a pass-through grant to Cedar Crest College, an ARCAP grant for $1 million for renovations to their athletic fields.
And Mr. Guridi, that was in your committee?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that, it's what it says, it's an ARCAP money that comes from the state department of community economic development, it's pass-through money for Cedar Crest, and it's a matching grant, and we, the committee forward it unanimously favorably to council. All ARCAPs are matching grants.
So, Cedar Crest put up a million dollars also.
It was a number.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guridi. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public?
Mr. Hendrix? Oh, you got it, okay. President, I have seven days and noon days.
Okay, Bill 14, Mr. Hamlin.
Bill 14 is an amendment to the civil service board for police officers that were adopted, for police officers that were adopted, rules adopted for provisions that revise the automatic disqualifiers for the hiring process, replaces the conditional offer of employment, with background investigation, reinstates the oral exam and the promotion testing procedures, and this is the one that we... and this is the one that requires six of seven votes, the way of the introduction of line passage.
Okay, and Mr. Hendricks, that was in your committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this, these are only minor changes, however, that allow for greater efficiency in the manner and selection of hiring practices for the department. This was also sent to the committee, and the committee recommended a favorable vote, three to nothing, to the full council.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll vote on Bill Fourteen. Thank you, sir. Resolutions for final passage. We'll start with R. Sixty-three.
R. Sixty-three is the lease of the land along American Parkway for the placement.
Thank you. Who else? Sheriff and administration, tell us a little bit about that.
I'll give you a little bit of a background. We obviously have an agreement with a company to have billboards that are placed throughout the city, obviously, on our property, and to the fact of where we feel that it is something that is in the best interest of the city of placement. So there were a few locations that were given to us to look at possibilities. The next three, basically, are the areas that we haven't looked at, and we feel are 100% capable of having these billboards placed here at these areas. And it's the recommendation from the engineering department that these are fully capable of happening at these areas. So basically, all we're doing here is taking it, and we're just, this is a lease, for them to be able to put the billboards on it.
And these will be, these are new additional billboards in the city?
Yes, and actually, one of them, though, is actually going to be pulled from, because the Thomas Street Bridge is going to be, you know, out of commission for a couple of years. So one of them actually is going to be taken from there and put over in American Parkway. But these are new locations, and like I said, we've looked through them. Our chief surveyor has taken a look at the areas, and we feel very comfortable with these areas for these billboards.
Okay, it might be jumping a jump, but we're looking at three billboards. How many will that bring us to then, you know?
Honestly, I'm not sure.
Okay, wait for me, you can get the...
Probably get that information.
Yeah, you can get the information. Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Mr. McLean?
I have one question here, says why should council unanimously support this bill? It says revenue for the city. How much revenue are we making on a billboard?
Well, it all depends on the location of it, and the amount of people that want to go with it. But there are locations that could make up $80,000 per location.
For a year? How much is that?
Up to eighty.
Up to how much?
Up to $80,000.
$80,000?
Depends, depends on the location, depends on, you know, like anything else, you know, if you have a high-volume roadway, there'll be more people that want to go onto it, obviously, at a higher price for it. But there is value in the city for these billboards to be placed.
One more question, do we have like a minimum bid? Minimum cost, whatever you want, however you want to word it. If somebody wants to place a billboard there, that they just can't do it for $100, it's got to be a lease.
Well, like anything else, you know, they take a look at these areas, and they feel pretty comfortable with it, that, you know, we're looking at probably $40,000. But it's like anything else, you know, we take a look at it, we see the volume. They also evaluate it then, I mean, they have billboards all over the place. They have a pretty much a gauge of what it's going to be, but it's not a guarantee.
Right, okay. I guess I was just trying to get, there's a minimum that we would, that the city would accept, to allow somebody to put on that?
Well, not only that, it's, yes, and, but it's put up, just keep in mind, this is put up at all their costs, and too. So there's no cost to us with that. It's basically going through the lease and having a gizmo for it, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? My colleagues, Dr. McGuire, go ahead.
On the, excuse me, on the earnings that you mentioned, is it a constant earning? Or can it, is the sign up for perhaps six months, and then you go for another one?
Pretty much, I mean, like anything else, they have contracts with people, where it's not something where it'd be for a day or two. It's something that is a long term, and it comes along with it. To get you the exact numbers, I'd imagine you'd have to, you know, to see what they historically have been over the years. They've been very good, but if you want to get those numbers, we have to get it from the finance department, but...
We don't see that, our thought, given, can the city effectively, or has it been able to effectively predict the income for the budget year? Any kind of budget year?
Yes, finance does, does make an evaluation of that, for what they perceive the income will be for the year, yes. To go back and look to, you know, like I said, finance would have to say exactly, you know, what it was.
The number is, you know, just when I was there, a steady number. Do you take off the billboards every year?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm going to vote against this. And the reason I'm doing it is, I simply don't support, don't believe that we should be having the posting of large commercial billboards in our streets, around our parks, areas, et cetera. I know we have a contract, and we have signed it, but I do not wish to sustain that, and so that's why I'll vote no.
Okay. Any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. Blaisian?
Just as a point of information, I'm currently doing a contract receivables audit. This contract will be part of that audit, but it'll be for the prior years. So when that's done, I, you know, I'd be happy to report on that specific issue.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greedy, go ahead.
So you will get the kind of financial resources we get from the billboard?
Yeah, I can tell you what was remitted, but it'll be for the previous.
Yeah, 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 well, at least we have an idea.
Yeah.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public?
So, will you let us know?
Hold on, hold on. Welcome. Damian Anderson?
Lois Arciszewski, A-R-C-I-S-Z-E-W-S-K-I, 2176 Avenue C, Bethlehem, 18017.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. I'm Lois Arciszewski, I'm the real estate manager at Adams Outdoor, and we are the vendor to this contract. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of fill-in information, if we can. We currently have six digital structures throughout your city. And in July of 2016, we paid the city $108,967. The contract is 25% of our revenue to the city of Allentown. And it is a master lease agreement or a contract. The three structures, the new ones that we are proposing, along with your Department of Public Works and your chief surveyor, two are on American Parkway, and one is on the Eighth Street Bridge. And we do anticipate projected revenue, that on those three, first year, first full year, that it's in operation, that we would be providing to the city somewhere between $85,000 and $100,000 on that. But as I said, in July of 16, it was $108,867. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for coming up. Any questions from my colleagues? Well, Mr. Greedy, he has to go first.
Maybe you can answer, or perhaps Craig can. Are any of these billboards, and I see Marlon McKing, going to be anywhere in close proximity to our parks?
American Parkway, obviously not. The Eighth Street Bridge, I grew up in Allentown, I should know this off the top of my head, there are...
Well, it's on the bridge, then it wouldn't be...
Right, so it is not in close proximity to any parks.
Marlon McKing, Junior Drive, where is the location that would be?
That location will be just west of, what is that, South Sixth Street, or Lehigh Street? That comes down the hill, Allentown School District School?
Yes.
So, uh...
West of there.
Just west of there.
So it'll be east of the Fountain Park, Fountain Creek House?
That's exactly right, of the pool house, and then the fields there.
Okay, thank you.
But as you said, it's the bridge, so it's elevated.
Any other questions? Mr. Greedy, have you got a question?
I'm sorry, you say it's a bridge, or it's elevated? Is it going to be on top of the bridge, or are you looking at underneath the bridge? You have another one?
Well, it would, it will be visible to motorists that are traveling the Eighth Street Bridge. It's a unipole structure, a single, that's correct. And the ground intrusion will be somewhere between 48 inches and 60 inches for that unipole.
You only put in one, right? If the thing's on the Fifth Street Bridge.
You are correct. It's one unipole, but it has two digital faces. One northern, yes. And just one other point I wanted to mention, in addition to the 25% of revenue, part of the contract, but it's Adams policy anyway, that we provide community messaging to you folks. And we do a lot of work with the Parks Department, St. Patrick's Day, I just brought some, carriage rides, the movies in the park. So at Adams and our office, we actually have an employee that's dedicated to community messages throughout the whole Lehigh Valley. And then we work with the different departments in your city, recycle, and on and on. So it is the revenue share and the community message.
Sure, thank you.
These are just the people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, come on.
Helen Pahn again, 2016, East Highland Street. Thank you, Dr. McGuire, for saying you're not going to vote for it. I'm sure my voice means nothing about this, but I just think absurd. It's overwhelming. What are we living in? This is just one thing after another coming down the road, it's disgusting. I don't know where we're at in this generation, that we have to make money out of putting these horrific signs up. Splash, another story, and another one, and another one, and in the meantime, if you think that's a lot of money, you people, I mean, the city squanders more money than that. I'm just, I'm overwhelmed, I'm disgusted, and I know we're going to vote for it, because all the signs wink, wink, but it's awful. That's my opinion, it's awful.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll vote on R. Sixty-three.
Still waiting for Ms. Atha. Mr. President, I have four yeas, and that is Mr. O'Connell, Ms. Moda, Ms. Atha, and Mr. McLean. I have two nays, Mr. Hendricks and Mr. McGuire, and I have an abstention from Mr. Greedy.
Okay, I asked this once before. Mr. Wild, I need an explanation on an abstention vote. Is it a pro vote, or a no vote? A yes or a no, understand your vote? I know, but I can rule it later.
An abstention vote is an abstention vote, it's either a yea nor a nay. It can't be considered either.
Okay, I was told differently, in years past, but, okay. Alright.
On one point, Mr. President, abstention meant usually yea, okay?
Yeah.
At one point, but the abstention should be, exactly what I was going to say. You're not, you're not, you're not a pro, kind of thing. Not for a, not an instant.
You have individuals who have issued that abstention, unless it's wide lies against them. Solicitor's office is always talking, you can't...
Alright, it's neither here nor there, we have four votes, so let's go on.
Correct.
R. Sixty-four?
R. Sixty-four authorizes the leasing of a portion of 759 Marlon McKing Drive to LBR for the construction operation of the...
Okay, same deal, but go ahead.
Same process, same process that we were talking about previously with the other one. It's just another location where we felt that it was capable of the use of a billboard in that area.
Okay. I mean, here's my comment, we get hammered, council meeting, council meeting, council meeting, for spending money, spending money, spending, spending money, and now here's a chance we can a revenue builder. Okay, so it's my comment. Comments from my colleagues?
I think my comments matter, is that although I do want the money, however, I feel like too many billboards, like reminds me of this song, signs, signs everywhere, you know, so, and it just, I am not that crazy about those bright signs everywhere in the city. And that's why I can't, you know, I'm torn.
Yeah, that's your prerogative, but, you know. Go ahead, Mr. Hendricks.
My concern is, I don't feel that we can continue polluting our parks, and I believe that these do that. So that's my reason for voting against.
I have a question.
Ms. Atha, go ahead.
We're talking about parks, but they're not on the parks, are they? This is like, this one, Martin McKing Boulevard, that is going to be shown up around the Eighth Street Bridge, correct? From Council Street.
Correct, correct.
So that's not our park, Parkway Boulevard is not our park.
And the area is not designated as a park district, so...
Where exactly is it to be located?
That would be on the north side of MLK, and that will be facing, it'll be one single pole that's going up, and then the people, actually, when they're driving north on the Eighth Street Bridge, will be seeing it. It's not south-facing, it's not anything bright going towards any of the houses. It is just for people that, when they're driving on the Eighth Street Bridge, and they'll be driving towards.
Aside from the money, what other advantages are to this? Do we have advertising, or anything for Allentown, things that we would be...
Yeah, that's what was all part of it.
No, you don't have to come up again. We guys just feel, but, no. You did a great job, but I mean, we don't need to hear it. It's going to be the same thing for sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. No, no, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, but when we got into this gig a while ago, there was a commitment made that it would not be put on park land. Am I correct?
And it's not park land?
Exactly, that's, that's, exactly, that's my point. We went through this, when we did this in the beginning, it would not be put on park land. We don't want to screw up the parks, and, you know, the whole bit, we understand that. This is not park land, okay? This is revenue for the city. Go ahead, anybody else? Ms. Moda, go ahead.
Well, that's why I voted yes. I mean, she explained exactly what she's, what, but they're planning to put it. She explained it very clearly, and that's why I voted yes. I think she did a great job explaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, public? Seeing none, we will vote. Mr. Hamlin, R. Sixty-four?
This time I got, or you got, five yeas, one nay, and then one abstention. The abstention again is Mr. Greedy, and the nay is Mr. McGuire. Everybody else is a yes.
Okay, let's go to R. Sixty-five.
R. Sixty-five authorizes the leasing of a portion of 811 North Front Street for the construction operation of the... for the construction operation of the billboard.
Go ahead, Mr. Messenger, go ahead, sir.
Again, this was a location that we looked at that was capable of handling the billboard, and we had no objection to it. We actually think it's a good location for it.
Where you have it, North Front Street? I heard you have this right about.
It's right along American Parkway. Okay, front, American Parkway.
Right on American Parkway. Okay, comments from my colleagues? Dr. McGuire, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, can you explain to me why R sixty-three is a vote on lease of the land, where sixty-four and sixty-five say, "Refer to public safety, refer to public works"?
That, well, sixty, sixty-four, sixty-three doesn't say refer. Sixty-four is, that's an error, refer to public safety, that's a typo, obviously, Mr. Handlin. We're not referring to anyone, we're voting on it tonight. And then sixty-five, refer to public works, is also a typo, and it's, it shouldn't be there.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome, sir. Any...
On this one, on this one...
Go ahead, Mr. Greedy, go ahead.
On this one, would it be right on the new bridge, then?
It's, it's not by the new bridge, but it's in, it's in that location, it's Front Street.
Front Street, okay, past Elias Market?
Right.
Okay, so when you pass Elias Market, you're gonna hit the American Parkway right on the bridge.
And you would actually make a right then, and then you would see it.
Also, so it's by the new bridge? If you make a right on the bridge.
It's near it, yes. But it's not, we didn't wanna have something that would take away the aesthetics of the bridge itself. So it's not something that blocks the bridge, it's not something that blocks... Right.
There's one in that similar, there's one in that location down there now coming across the bridge, right? Tillman Street Bridge. If he comes, if he comes from the east side.
Yeah, the Tillman Street, but that one, like I said, that one is gonna be moving over.
Okay, comments from, any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hawn?
Again, twenty sixteen East Highland Street. I understand now there will be no inroads to the city of Allentown without a sign. The Eighth Street, Front Street, everything leading to downtown Allentown. Which I can understand that the arena is number one priority, and everybody trying to get there must pass one of the signs. But it was brought up by a previous speaker about that the money is so important, maybe, just maybe, doing a better job on the budget would make up the deficit of a couple of bucks from the signs.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, let's vote on R sixty-five.
Mr. President, I have five yays, one nay from Mr. McGuire, and an abstention from Mr. Greedy.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to R sixty-six.
R sixty-six are approvals of certificates of appropriateness for working in historic district, except for twenty-six West Gordon, one one three six Chestnut, and thirty-one seventeen Street.
Uh, thank you, I see Mr. Pringle is here, you wanna explain something?
Sure, I'll start. I'll start with thirty-one North Seventeenth Street, which is a relatively simple case. It's approval for the gentleman to build a deck and possibly a set of stairs leading down from the deck, from, to the back of his house in West Park. It's at thirty-one North Seventeenth Street. Are there any questions about that one?
Go ahead.
Okay, and then we'll talk about the demolition of the garage at the back of eleven thirty-six Chestnut Street in Old Allentown historic district. It's in very poor condition and Harv had no problems at all coming to a decision that this garage should be demolished. There's gonna be simply a concrete pad that exists there now. That won't be a parking area. And then the final case I'll talk about is seven twenty-six West Gordon Street, which has been on the radar for a considerable amount of time now regarding its potential demolition and the issues we've been having with trying to get it demolished. There is an attorney here this evening that represents the owner of seven twenty-six West Gordon who would like to say a few words. But the Harv reviewed this case and determined, after much discussion, to go ahead and to again issue a certificate of appropriateness for the building to be repaired rather than be demolished. On March twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, just a few weeks ago, a representative from base engineering came in and applied for a building permit to repair the wall. So there's some progress. There's some potential that there's going to be some activity at this house that will rectify the situation with this wall. So with that, the warning of the certificate of appropriateness you should have, but it's basically the same as what was done back in November by Harv, but was not acted on by the bank. However, like I said, there is some activity at this point. So if you have any questions for me, I'll take them this time, and then I'll let Mr. Matt Thistle answer.
Go to Mr. Greedy first.
Thank you. My question is regards to the garage demolition of eleven thirty-six Chestnut Street.
Okay.
That property, that, they are supposed to be, you know, there is a sign there that says that they have to stop, right on the door, stop preparing or work in the property, because it looks like they started to work on it now. I don't know, they're supposed to be working there. Not only work on the porch, they also work on the steps. It was deteriorating for years. They had made several calls, and finally, some action was taken, and they started working again. But the garage, I'm concerned because there are three homes in that little section. It's right behind the Kinnick School.
Okay.
And I'm concerned that they're leaving without a garage. I know of situations where people are actually coming and vandalizing that area. Vandalizing the garage in the back, and now there's three garages right next to each other. So if you leave, and that's an alley, by the way, if you leave, and you take down the garage, what's gonna happen is those people are vandalizing their garages in the area. I just wanna start coming into the property themselves, the little family that they have in the back. And there's another alley right on the side, and there's people, you know, seniors living there. So I'm concerned about, I'd rather have them fix the garage and repair it as opposed to just badly demolishing it.
Okay, well, this was not brought up, it was not, no one at Harv was aware of this situation.
That's why I'm making you aware. I know that it's gonna be brought to you.
Right, and, you know, my thing presented is a advisory to the council. You can amend the certificate of appropriateness. A solution might also be to put, require the property owner to put a fence around the backyard, or something like that.
That may be, there's a small fence there that people can jump over. But that property used to be a single family unit, then it would turn into three units. The other two are just single family units. In fact, I compared one from two to one, okay? Now that one is three there. I think that we're building it now into another three families, I mean, three units. So I'm very concerned about that. I wish you, if you, you know, somebody looks into it, decides what they're doing, that I see a lot of children back there, or youths, I would say, sometimes not doing the best. The area has deteriorated from, you know, ten, twenty years ago. And I'd like to see if you're looking at the real problem, or you are through that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McLean?
I was just gonna, my only question was gonna be if we had a timeline on the Gordon Street property, but I gotta respond to the bouillon, too, that normally if you have a garage that's, you know, in repair and it's being vandalized, if you get rid of it, that's usually the appropriate way to go. If you're not gonna build a new one, you've eliminated. Now, that doesn't mean they're not gonna do vandalism somewhere else, but you just, it's not gonna happen there. Especially if it's in disrepair.
Then the best, we don't know if it is in disrepair.
I think you're saying that is what it is.
You should have had in your packet...
See, they, they put the...
Mike, we can't get in to look at the attachments with the vote up there. But anyhow, Gordon Street, do we have a timeline?
I'm not sure, Mr. Thistle, I'll have to answer that question. But a building permit is valid for a year.
Sir, you want to say something? Name and address for the...
Good evening, my name is Matt Thistle. I represent the owner of the property, seven twenty-six West Gordon Street. To address your question, I was updated today by the general contractor. And I guess I'll just start with the previous certificate of appropriateness, which on behalf of my client, I thank the council for allowing this additional time because I think that we're on the same page with Harv in terms of, rather than demolishing the property, rebuilding that wall that is an issue with Harv's standards of mind to preserve the historic value. And the update that I was provided today, the general contractor, the bid of Lehigh Valley paving was selected. They are currently working with PP and L Utilities because there's a high voltage line in the area that would have to be moved, and they have to apply for that. There's also a number of additional permits that they have to apply for and be granted, including a dumpster. They also have to coordinate shutting down the alley, which is adjacent to the wall, that is structurally unsound. As Mr. Kimmerly advised, there's, the base engineering company has applied for their construction permit, and they, I believe, my understanding is they're gonna have a start date for the construction within forty-eight hours, but unfortunately, I can't provide a specific timeline.
That's the best one we've had so far. Yeah, at least there's some, I guess is the bottom line here.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. McGuire?
Who is the owner of the property?
The owner, the record owner is Lakeview Servicing, my client is...
And how long have they owned that property?
I don't have the sheriff's deed in front of me, but the sheriff's sale was... I don't wanna guess on the record.
Okay, Mr. Kimmerly, do you know, do you remember?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure off the top of my head. They've owned it at least, at least a few years.
Well, 'cause I remember before I became a council, I remember hearing about that particular building and so on. From my viewpoint, the owner is an irresponsible owner who let that place deteriorate and do nothing. You may disagree, that's okay, but I'm just saying that one of our big problems in the city is we have hundreds, if not thousands, of places where abandoned owners, particular banks, do not keep up their properties and cause the degradation of the neighborhoods around, which leads to vandalism, junkies hitting up in these places and so on. So you already mentioned the back alley, that you're going to do something there, that is a problem.
My understanding is that the contractor, Lehigh Valley Paving, is going to coordinate with, I believe, the city in closing off that alley to be used by vehicles because while the construction's going on, it'll be dangerous to, obviously, operate the vehicle.
A lot of people were parking behind this building, perhaps illegally. Are you aware, you may not, are you aware of the tendency of people to park their cars there, which may or may not interfere with the movement of the contractor, etc.?
I wasn't aware of any illegal parking taking place next to my client's property. However, I would think that would be addressed when they coordinate with the city to shut down that, at least that section of the alley. If cars can't drive into there, I assume you can't park it.
I'm aware of, I'm aware of the legal parking problem. This is property of any occasions, and it seems to be the same cars that are parked there all the time. I don't believe that they're there with the permission of the owner, and when it comes to do the construction, they're gonna have to be thrown away for a move.
Given your point there, which is, you've mentioned this, but I did it at the Harv meetings. Why doesn't the city check at those people? Maybe they do.
I don't know whether anyone's complained. I don't know whether anyone's complained about our, our, to the, to the appropriateness.
Okay, no complaint, no problem. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, my colleagues? You heard from the public? Anybody else in the public wanna speak on this? Seeing none, vote on R sixty-six.
Mr. President, I have seven yays, including...
Okay, R sixty-seven.
R sixty-seven is submission of a DCNR grant for the development of Jordan Creek Greenway Trail in the amount of...
Okay, Ms. Taylor is here.
Thank you, yes, the twenty seventeen application round for Community Conservation Partnerships Program grant funds is due on April twelfth. Applications are due on April twelfth. Resolutions for each application are required. We intended to apply for four applications. The first one is for a DCNR grant for the construction of the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail. That trail is currently, this year, with another two grants being designed. The intention is to complete the design this year. The trail will run from Gordon Street, actually, from Terror Street, behind Central Catholic's parking lot along the creek. It'll continue on the creek down to Sunder Avenue and eventually ending at Jordan Park, where the park will continue out to MacArthur Road. So the grant is for, it's a one-to-one match. The grant application will be for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once the design is completed, we would be eligible to apply for a TAP grant for the remaining part of the match.
Okay, thank you. Questions from my colleagues? Dr. McLean, go ahead.
Yeah, you said it's a one-to-one match.
It's fifty-fifty, it's a five hundred thousand dollar project cost. The grant would be two hundred and fifty. We would apply for an additional two hundred and fifty to the TAP program.
Okay, no guarantee on that, though?
No, there is no guarantee on it either.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Handlin, hold on.
Mr. President, I have seven yays, including...
R sixty-eight.
R sixty-eight authorized submission of another DCNR grant for the development of master plan for Percy Roo Park in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, thank you. Percy Roo is a, one of our largest parks with multiple athletic fields. They are inefficiently laid out, and light poles are in play areas. And what we wanna do is take the opportunity to complete a master plan for the park and lay out fields efficiently, lay out lighting efficiently. Parking is an issue, address the parking problems there so that the park can be used as, kind of as a sports complex. We get many requests for tournaments. Central Catholic uses Percy Roo, and is interested in working with us on developing that park. So we would like to apply for a master plan to start that process.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Handlin, vote on R sixty-eight.
What is that, seven yays and two yays?
R sixty-nine.
R sixty-nine is another DCNR grant for the construction of a skate park at Jordan Park in the amount of two hundred thousand... R sixty-nine is another DCNR grant for the construction of a skate park at Jordan Park in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, we will be working on the designs for the skate park this year, it's been in the works for several years. This grant was, we were unsuccessful applicant last year, but had a quick review, a thorough review on how to improve our application, and we want to try again for funds to help us with construction of the skate park.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public?
I just hope you get it this time, sorry, I just hope you get it this time around.
Anybody from the public? Mr. Handel, vote.
Mr. President, I have six yeas and one nay, the nay is from Councilperson McLean.
Okay, thank you. R seventy.
R seventy authorized submission of a DCNR grant for the redevelopment and construction of a spray park at Irving Park in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
This is really.
Ms. Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry. This really would be what we're categorizing as a spray pool. It's a combination of a zero-depth entry, the idea is a zero-depth entry down into and extending to an area with water play features. The opportunity arose to us because we learned that Irving Park is one of the few parks in the city that qualify for land water conservation fund monies. It's a federal program, it's only eligible for properties that have received funding before. So that makes Irving has received funding before, so it is therefore eligible for that. In talking to the state during this grant process, when we reviewed our projects with them, we learned that right now in northeastern Pennsylvania, there's no other municipality that is applying for these funds. So the opportunity for us to receive these funds is very high. That's why we wanted to switch Irving in the process and move up and apply for these funds. Asking for five hundred thousand dollars in funds for, monies for that. The reason that we are recommending now a skate park, and I understand, and I can apologize, I understand it is a little cart before the horse because of the timing of the grants and needing to have resolutions to accompany the grants. We believe that the swimming toward the future plan recommended on three criteria, three options. All three options recommended some type of spray park or spray pool. Due to the age of Irving, the small size of the envelope for Irving, and the attendance numbers at Irving. Also, the opportunity for interactive play in a, in a spray park is a great opportunity that is increasingly popular when you go to municipalities that have challenges paying for swimming pools. Just to replace Irving Pool alone, taking into account the filter system would be almost one and a half million dollars for a very small pool in a very small envelope. So what we would like to do by proposing the spray pool is take the opportunity to look at the entire southern end of the park that is macadam right now, and the pool house and the pool, and redesign that a little, maybe add a pavilion, add green space, dedicated parking, and make that part of the park function better than it does right now. So that is the reason, one of the reasons. Should the resolution pass and the grant be submitted, we will immediately reach out to the community, the Eastside Allentown community, to talk about this, because chances are good that we will get the funding. So we want to be in the, in the planning discussion process now for that part of the park, so that the project is successful and the community is on board and part of the process.
Okay, thank you. Quite a few people on the east side are not happy with this. Eastside doesn't have a pool, we have Jordan Pool from the north, then that pool from the south, we have the Cedar Beach Pool from the west end. What do the kids on the east side, what do they swim?
Well, they, they can, they have the spray pool, the spray pool opportunity, they also have, we are in the process of working with Deraf High School on a public swim program using the high school pool that would involve swim lessons and other public programs. That's one of the options, I, I understand that that is a concern for swim lessons. But again, the feasibility of building a plain swimming pool in that area to code is an extremely expensive proposition, or something that when we started to put an application together, does not, did not to staff and to my body staff make sense.
It'll be, it'll be open this year, Irving Pool.
Oh, Irving Pool will be open this year, yes.
Uh huh. So if it's open this year, why can't we continue to have it open and build around the pool with the spray park? You're basically saying the pool will eventually go away, and then we'll have a spray park.
Correct, well, that you have to, you can, but then you hogtie part of the, that part of the park is not a very big area. So if you're, if you're intending to build a decent sized, good spray park, we're not looking to replicate Bucky Boyle, we want to have something that's a little bit of both, part Bucky Boyle, part waiting pool that is linked together, to have to design around and keep the swimming pool operating, which is, at the end of its useful life, would really hinder and harm and affect the entire project.
Comments from my colleagues?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is the age of the pool there now?
Irving Pool is our oldest pool, it was built in nineteen thirty-nine.
Okay, we have an estimate of the cost to replace that pool?
To replace the pool in kind, just the pool and not the filtration system. Keep in mind, the filtration system is in the basement, it's at a level that is actually lower than the pool. So when the, when the power goes out, the pool drains. It's kind of a little backwards with the balancing of the water. Just the pool itself was a minimum of one million dollars, not taking into account relocating the filtration system.
If you added the filtration system, what would the total cost be?
That was about a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred additional thousand dollars, that was a couple of years ago, it was a very general estimate.
So we'd get one point two, one point two-five million?
Correct, as it is to me, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
I, I think that it's worth to revisit, I, I think I should think about it, because I've been receiving a few, a few phone calls. The east side is not happy, they're not, they're wonderful.
I understand, I understand.
One, one point two million, that's a deal compared to three point two million for Cedar Beach. I mean, I'm being wise ass, I'm being wise guy, I'm sorry, but I, I don't, I don't think it's fair for the kids on the east side, I, I just don't. I, I don't think it's fair, I mean, you know, I, to vote on something, to vote on something April fifth that has to be done by April twelfth, I mean, it's, it's a short, short term, I mean, do we throw, do we throw the five hundred thousand dollars away? It's a matching grant, that's a million dollars.
Mr. President, if I can say, there is, and has happened, because the public process essentially would start now, you can apply to the state for a scope change. It's an aquatic facility, you can apply for a scope change, so as we work through the public process, we may very well end up with a pool and requesting to change the scope to a pool. This is not a black and white, must be this.
So if we do a community impact study, if we engage in the neighborhood and the residents over there, we can get the five hundred thousand and then change down the road?
Correct.
Is that, is that in writing? Is it in writing?
We have done scope changes before.
Done scope changes before?
Yes, we have, yes, we have.
Okay.
And I, I think.
That's a little wiggle room, that's a little wiggle room, people a little better.
I think it's, and I'm going to hold you accountable for this, that we do engage the community over there and get their thoughts on it. I think that's also extremely important.
Absolutely, that's why I agree with you, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. Pearson.
Indeed, the people over there, Dennis Pearson, nine forty-two, East Two and Street, East Downtown, Regisville Neighborhood Association. People over there are not unhappy with the swimming pool. Actually, they're unhappy with the basketball court and the policies that have resulted in overuse of the basketball court and problems with the kids. Where in the city, you're removing basketball courts all over the city, and where are the kids going? Irving Park, coming there at all hours of the night and everything else, that's what they're mad about. The pool, yes, is outdated, should be replaced, hopefully at Irving Park. However, we accept a pool somewhere in the area, because if you eliminate that pool, you are eliminating swim, swimming opportunities for the entire Deraf student population area. Irving Pool, they attempted to close Irving Pool in nineteen eighty-eight already, and we got it back. But soon as we got it back, they eliminated Keck Park's pool. And we asked Marushak at the time, can we have a park for kids? Because there's no park for kids, because they did take away the swimming pool for kids at Irving Park. So I don't consider a spray park in itself or pool a upgrade to the park, it's a downgrade of the park. But if you put a spray park and a pool, that's fine, but I would also believe that something has to be done at Keck Park. A spray park would fit in there, because they promised us a kids' park there, they never did it. So, but I'm just report, report to you that Keck Park was eliminated soon as Irving Park came back online. Then Roosevelt was eliminated. Why? The excuse, the excuse was that the, our lifeguards were acting up. So they switched the lifeguards at MAC, and switched the lifeguards over to, from Roosevelt to MAC, and then closed the pool the next year, and they closed Bucky Boyle. So all these, the only, the only pool that has been eliminated in the Allentown territory was Fountain. Everything comes from the east side of Allentown, which I recall in one school board, the school board meeting, when they're considered an east side school, said, why are we going to put a school in this? We are part of the city of Allentown, but oftentimes, we have to consider the suburbs.
That's good, that's good, Mr. Pearson, you said your piece, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Ms. Taylor, I do want to go back, and I, and I do want to thank you very much, it's, it's a very sensitive topic, but I do want to thank you very much for stating about, it could be a change, you know, down the road, and I do appreciate you doing that. Mr. Long, go ahead.
Ken Long, seven twenty-one West Cumberland Street, Allentown. My concern is eliminated, this is a burning part of our history. Irving Park was a WPA project, it needs to stay. It already has had part of our history diminished by this administration, we don't need more.
Well, the buck's going to be there, the buck's not going anywhere.
The pool and the pool house were WPA projects.
You're talking about Stone, obviously, yeah, you're right.
I mean, Fountain Park was also a WPA project, I understand, the pool and pool house, which is why the admission for those two pools was free.
Uh huh, that's right, private money, you're right, okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public? About R seventy, then we'll vote on R seventy, Mr. Handel.
R seventy. Mr. President, I have seven yeas and two nays.
Okay, ordinance for introduction, I think the gentleman out there are concerned about the nuisance abatement ordinance, is that right? Out there, so I'm going to skip all the others and go right to that one, bill twenty-seven, we'll be here till eleven o'clock. So, bill twenty-seven, Mr. Handel.
Bill twenty-seven, events of general offenses code, creating article seven one five, nuisance abatement, by creating a progressive system for recurring violations of property used for business, commercial or industrial purposes that create penalties, sanctions, and closure of operations by any successive violations. I'd like to help save the environment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Handel, these are bills for introduction, obviously we don't vote on these tonight. We vote on, vote on April nineteenth, too, comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, go ahead, Mr. Long.
Some remarks for the members of the council. I just wanted to ask, one of the parameters of the ordinance, so what I'm asking is, as a business owner, I would imagine that my responsibilities are the same as me owning my home, so to the current, am I wrong?
I'll defer to this, I thought of Mr. Henderson, I knew he was on the committee.
I didn't understand the question.
He's a business owner, you're a business owner.
As a business owner. I'm not a business owner, I'm asking, as a business owner.
You asking what your responsibilities are?
Yeah, one of my responsibilities, what is the extent?
Do business in a safe manner?
Yes.
And making sure the public is safe.
Yes, but as far as what at my door occurred, I'm sure if I park you out, I'm responsible for that. Correct, if someone got hurt.
Well, and the same thing, if you're serving liquor, then you're also responsible, I don't need to tell you, I'm a dramatist guy, that you have a certain responsibility there, not to serve uneducated people.
Yes.
So that's.
So if somebody gets down the block, somebody, let's say leaves, let's say I have a bar, somebody walks out the bar, they start trouble down the block, am I held responsible for that?
You don't own a business?
No.
He's asking if he was a business owner, he asked me.
So you're asking if there's a problem at the bar?
No. Someone's at my place of business, they walk up, they get down the block.
Saying it's a bar, saying it's a bar.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Restaurant, a restaurant, okay, let's say a restaurant.
Restaurant, someone leaves, they get a block away, they create trouble, am I responsible for that?
I would think so.
I think that's a question that made best sense by Ms. Wild.
And the question is, I'm sorry.
If, if there's a problem at an establishment, say a diner.
There's no problem, he's at, he owns an establishment, there's a patron there who leaves, gets a block away, and gets into some sort of altercation in my, like, saying that right for you.
So the person thinks it'll be your business.
Was he served alcohol at your place? So it's not a cut and dry answer, but anyhow.
A lot of cut and dry answers, but I don't think it would fall under this point program, that's a different issue altogether.
Now, let's say, he's not, let's say I don't serve alcohol, and, I mean, people are stupid, right, you know, people do stupid things every day. So they leave, they create, they have an altercation, would I be held responsible for that?
Well, I, I hate to fall back on the old lawyer, it depends, you know, it depends on the facts, but it depends on the facts, frankly. I don't, I don't envision that being something that would give rise to you being cited under this program if the individual left and went somewhere else and created a problem.
And that's the reason.
The idea of this program is to eliminate disruptions in specific locations.
Absolutely, absolutely, the reason I ask is because, you know, just reading the news I've seen in the past where situations have happened, I mean, well, what, a year ago, I know neither that would issue at your business where somebody left and started damaging property and attacking people. That will be candid as on Thames Street, is it, am I right?
Yes, and we called the police, and the police took care of it.
Yeah, but that was a situation, so, you know, naturally, I would say, you know, you don't control that person, they left.
Actually, he left my place and somewhere else, so.
But calling the police is intense, correct?
Yes, that's what, that's what we did, so therefore, we can get any points for that, is I called the police.
Yes, so I just want, you know, clear language on it, because we've seen in other cases, other businesses, people have left the business and caused trouble, and then all we see in the news is that person, the business owner, is held responsible. And then we see, you know, moves from the city in the past, and I'm not talking about right now, but I'm talking about in past years, that the city has taken action against business owners, so.
Can I say something? I was a part of the committee, and I'm also an educator, and the first thing I said when we have this committee is that we do need to educate business owner about this new law, okay? I, I do understand that a lot of the people that was involved in this committee, they said, well, business owners, they should know, you know, if they own bars, or if they, or if they own restaurants, they should know about the law. But at the same time, I, I really believe that they should also get educated. I, I know that, that they have, you know, everything is written in writing, okay? And they, the police, you know, was, 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 was part of all this. And they did say that they were going to educate, you know, the public about this. So I just want you to know that there's, you know, there's written material about this new law, so just in case, if, you know.
And I mean, I'm reading the ordinance, I've read it already, but, you know, I'm breaking it down, going through it, and just asking questions.
And I'm glad that you're here, because I know that it can get very confusing.
Yeah, and, well, that's what I'm here, I'm doing, you know, I'm offering my help to. Yeah, and, well, that's what I'm here, I'm doing, you know, I'm offering my help to different business owners. Not because I get anything, I, I care about my community, so.
This isn't designed to go after responsible business owners. It's to go after those business owners who are irresponsible and time and time again allow conduct on their properties and within their business that creates a public safety problem.
Can I say one more, can I say one more?
Hi, Mr. Beadie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I appreciate you coming, and, and I think we got, this bill has gotten attention, and this is what we're looking for, to get attention.
Absolutely.
For people like you to come, ask questions, be concerned, know the laws, and communicate it to other people. So I appreciate you coming and asking these questions because this is what this law, this law is about, getting everyone's attention. To be good neighbors, thank you for coming.
And I do, I do appreciate that you said, you, you kind of clarified when you said about, as far as, you know, the business owner doing their due diligence, being in contact with the police, letting them know, hey, I got a situation here, you know.
That's what we want to mean, I don't want bartenders, or owners, restaurant owners to be afraid to call the police because they think they're gonna get points, that's not the case, it's just the opposite. If you call, we don't get the points, because you're getting rid of the nuisance.
Yeah, and you're right, it creates a responsibility on our business owners to be proactive.
Exactly.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you.
I think people care and love scientists.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I think your point is, is a little convoluted, I know where you're going, I mean, you're coming from in regards to your questioning, however, and then I ask, I ask Ms. Appa this question, as soon as she asks, she, she kind of, which I, I'm trying to support. But there are also people who ask me on the streets, you know, out there in the city, in regards to people who are in an establishment that serve alcohol or don't serve alcohol, like an after hours place that you have, sir. And they may not be causing a problem there inside, but they go out and they shoot somebody, they kill somebody down the block. What the newspaper is gonna say, they came out of darkness, that's what you're getting there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's put it on the table, what I'm gonna say is they came out of Dubai like it happened before, they're gonna say they came out of cash twenty-two like it has happened in the past, and it's down the block, and their body would not cause any problems there. But they caused a problem, a big problem when they got out of there. And that's the problem that, that's what we need to clarify here.
Well, until the police can prove, you just can't have a shooting a block away and assume it came from your establishment. The police will do the investigating, and when the investigating is, is complete, that's when the points will be issued, that's when the citations will be issued, so it's not gonna be something, oh, it came, it came from his bar, it had come from his bar. It's not gonna work that way, this is going to be done in a way that is going to be legal, it's going to be investigated. And we're hoping that it helps all the businesses, when, when your business is, is doing the right thing, this helps my business and people coming back into the city. So, believe me, you're just not going to be picked on because you're a certain bar, that won't happen.
So that means that it's fair, but the saddest part is that the news already will ruin, you know, the name of the establishment.
Yeah, well, we know that's about getting ratings and that's not about truth, it's telling people that's the thing. And that's, that's why I asked the question, because again, you know.
Okay, we're moving on, thank you, sir, good seeing you again. Okay, here we go, thank you, sir, Mr. Frye, right?
Yes.
Name and address for the record.
Gazer Frye, twenty-six sixty-seven Hamilton Boulevard. I like exactly what you were explaining, back to the point what I was getting at earlier. I'm looking to make improvements, I'm looking to hire the police. I just want to know why I'm not being afforded the same opportunities other places are.
I don't understand that, that is, I don't-
I mean, maybe, maybe-
This has to do, this involves areas, you know?
This is, you know, we, I mean, I don't want to be, this is, we're talking about the bill, we did get, we did get that in front of the floor, I, I don't have an answer, we'll have to get an answer.
I want to make it aware that, like, if somebody can find out for me?
We did, we did have Mr. Messenger who's representing the administration this evening, the mayor's office. We have his name, phone number, and let's find out why he doesn't get people.
Okay, no problem, that's all, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hendricks, we're going, anybody else from the public, oh, here we go, Mona. Yes, ma'am, name, name and address for the record.
At Eric Delarosa, ten twenty, Hanover Avenue.
Okay.
I would like to know how this legislation would help me with noise disturbances, constant noise disturbances from a business that if I did this, what would be the, the proceedance in terms of, okay, I hear a lot of noise before a clock in the morning, I call the police, by the time the police arrives, they've left. So how, how would that help me, that has to be documented by the police officers?
It has to be verified by the police.
And you, we've, we've, we've had contact over the last couple months, years, whatever, and you're talking about Hanover Avenue, the hook allowance.
Correct.
Got you, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Appa, Mr. Hendricks for committee, and Mr. Mona.
Well, I, the police do have to witness, so if, if the police get there, they not only give them a citation, now, this is where they get the points, and I believe the nuisance, the noise will be a three points. So if they get twelve points in six months, we have the right to close them down. So don't stop calling, just keep calling and calling until, because the police are really liking this law because they can do a lot more to help you. I understand.
Can I make a suggestion for you, too, and I'm not sure who it is, but each, the city is divided up into four, and each section of the city is overseen by what's called a PSA captain, police service area captain. I'm not sure who, Jim Kaiser. Jimmy Kaiser.
I've already met with him.
Deep with him, there, there should be something they could do, like, your frustration is the fact that you call the police, until they get there, the noises, the people who are creating the noise are gone and there's nothing there.
Well, there's been changes whether it's still making the noise, but I don't know if the outcome has changed from that.
Right, I would suggest that you talk to him, they can, he can work with the shift that's working, and obviously, I'm, I'm assuming this is, you know, during the night, and they could, they could work something out where they could maybe put somebody over there in plain clothes, maybe put somebody over there in an armored car, that they could, that they could witness the offenses.
There's one more thing I'd like to add, if you live in and around an establishment and people are leaving, there's going to be noise. You know, I, there's times people leave my bar, it's two o'clock in the morning, I, I wish they wouldn't be as noisy as they are, but maybe that's what's happening, you're leaving the establishment, they're not outside causing problems, but they're leaving by trying to-
Well, sometimes they just stay outside, they're like, they're loitering, and they'll hang, especially now with the warmer weather, they have a desk. So they'll sit out at the desk, and, you know, it's three, four o'clock in the morning, and they're beeling and they're having a good time, and I'm trying to go to sleep because I've got to go to work for next morning, so we have incidents like that.
This should, this should help you though, Mr. Beadie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for coming. All right, Mr. Hendricks, we're gonna refer that to public safety, that's yours.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to the original order, and Mr. Hamlin?
Bill fifteen amends the general fund by adding position of two positions in the bureau of building standards and outlets. There are the A B ads.
Okay, I don't, you don't have to, you don't have to give an explanation, Mr. Leidner. I, I'd like to say that we will assign it to a committee, and then at that point, then we will get the administration to come forth, but you don't have to say it because it's only an ordinance for introduction, it's not for a final passage.
Excellent.
And you stayed here for what, for three hours?
I enjoyed the conversation.
I, I think it's, so, comments from my colleagues about bill fifteen? Comments from the public, bill fifteen? Dr. McGuire, C E D C.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome, let's go right on to bill sixteen.
Bill sixteen amends the general fund, the insurance fund, the risk fund, the equipment fund, and the solid waste and dock fund by appropriating funds for the rollover of the conferences.
Thank you, sir, any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, this will go to Mr. Garede, Budget and Finance.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, bill seventeen.
And the grant fund budgets provide for supplemental appropriation of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars from the Department of Justice, on the pass-through grant to Bradbury, Sullivan, and G B T.
Okay, thank you, comments from my colleagues, comments from the public. Mr. Hendricks is not here, but I'll go to public safety, bill eighteen.
Bill eighteen amends the risk fund by transferring a little over a million bucks from the inappropriate balance to the, the general fund to the pass-through.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues, say none, comments from the public, say none. Mr. Garede, Budget and Finance.
Sir.
Amends the grant fund budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars from the Defense of any Department of Education, the city has a pass-through demand for Allentown Public Library's age pack systems.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues, comments from the public, this will go to Mr. Garede, Budget and Finance. I'm gonna be busy in the next couple of weeks.
Twenty amends the grant fund to provide for supplemental appropriation of two hundred fifty-nine thousand and seventy-six dollars from money received from the bond security for the twins at Denver Subdivision.
Thank you, comments from my colleagues, comments from the public. Bill twenty, Mr. McLean, Public Works. Bill twenty-one.
Bill twenty-one amends the grant fund budget again to provide for supplemental appropriation of four thousand three hundred twenty dollars as a grant for the purchase of some industries.
Comments from my colleagues, comments from the public, bill twenty-one, go to Mr. McLean, Public Works, bill twenty-two.
Twenty-two amends the general fund budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars from numerous donations from the business, uh, community.
Okay, thank you.
Purchase of a, a simulator for trading dealing with horse scenarios.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues, comments from the public, it'll go to bill, go to public safety, Mr. Hendricks, bill twenty-three.
Twenty-three amends in two thousand seventeen, general fund budgets provide for supplemental appropriation of ninety-four thousand sixty-one and dollars and twelve cents from municipal police officers' education and training commission, tuition, and salary reimbursement from Act one twenty training.
Thank you, comments from my colleagues, comments from the public, Mr. Hendricks, public safety, bill twenty-four.
Twenty-four amends the general fund budget again to provide for supplemental appropriation of a lot of thousand dollars from Lee County Drug Task Force for overdose.
Comments from my colleagues, comments from the public, none, but bill twenty-four goes to Mr. Hendricks.
Twenty-five amends the general fund budget to accommodate the reorganization of the physicians in the Department of Public Works to create a more efficient management of operations.
Thank you, comments from my colleagues, none, comments from the public, Mr. McLean, Public Works, bill twenty-six.
Twenty-six amends the health budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars to the grant from Highmark to provide for continued training and support.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues, none, comments from the public, none, and it's going to Dr. McGuire, C E D C. And we take our twenty-seven, and resolution for introduction, there are none, and in your business?
If I could just mention two things, real quick, and I just wanted to note the passing of Ed Don Lee. Both of us knew from, you know, as the chairman, CEO of Air Products, but the guy was an active, in early, a firm believer in early childhood education and a pioneer in giving money for that, finding money for that, and also lobbying money for early childhood education. So I guess it just passed our condolences on to his family, and he's gonna be certainly missed by the community. You talk about a guy that did a lot for the community, he's, he's one guy.
Absolutely, well said.
And then one other thing, and Craig, since you're here, you're it, there was some problems with police pensions. I'm not sure about fire, but there's been some issue with police pensions, it was supposed to be corrected. My understanding as of last week that it still was not corrected, can we get an answer on that? Certain, certain people have retired and waited weeks and months for pension checks, and, and they were incorrect. So if we could, if we could get a little background check on that, all right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, anything for good and welfare, say none, motion to adjourn, so move. Okay, well, Mr. Hamlin, what are we, do the iPads, we leave them here?
Yes.
Okay, and are they gonna be saved?